Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District's Board of Directors. First agenda item, I would invite folks to stand, pledge allegiance. Complaints, Agents, keep the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Alright, folks, the second agenda item is public comment, so I see that we have members of the public here. If you have complaints, introduce yourself, Donna, if you can introduce yourself.
I'm Donna Stone, and I'm here tonight to say thank you to all of our educators for National Teacher Appreciation Week. And I've been in a few of the schools and just with cards and so much else. And it's, you know, we just need to let our teachers know that we appreciate them. So I encourage you all to send cards or just give a high five or something to our teachers, especially this week, and recognize them for everything that they do and show their support. The second thing I want to do is to give a shout out to Molly Stark. And the shout out is about a flight at a ceremony that I am leading in the different schools. Once, you know, we can get the kids back in one open space. I was at Molly Stark with four veterans, and one of them was a Korean War veteran, which is pretty amazing. And Mr. Hillary got our assembly going, and all the kids in school, K through five, were there. And he did the safe, kind, respectful, responsible, everything went smoothly for 40 minutes. The kids knew the answers to the questions, they rhymed some applause, they were appreciative, it was just excellent. The one thing I want to mention is when we left the ceremony, we were outside of the school, our Korean War veteran was just in awe of how safe, kind, respectful, responsible he's always our kids were. He says, "It's unbelievable, they were wonderful." So to get that positive out into the community, and I just said to him, "Spread the word." "No worries, we're doing a good job." So I just wanted you to know that things are happening and they're happening in a positive way. So thank you for all of your support for our educators, and I have to scoot out to go to my next meeting. And Bennington Cares, of course, I support that, and she's excellent. Good to see everybody, too. I'm Arielle, and I am from Bennington Cares, which is the citizen group that is making ourselves available for where there might be some needs within the school so we can help. And I'm just finishing first afternoon of after-school programs. I'm doing arts and crafts after-school class with one of our other members, Julie Helped. And I just wanted to say that there was a lot of excitement at the school for it. Over 70 children signed up for these after-school programs, there's been three offered, three different topics over the next five weeks, 70 children, it was wonderful, the excitement. And I too, as a citizen, just had a who doesn't tell him, working with the kids. And the other thing that just has happened so wonderfully is that the principal has been so supportive of getting this sort of up and running again after COVID and bringing up the other reasons. And in my, in the own group where I was working, we had five helpers. We had two teachers who were there to help with the arts and crafts, with the arts after-school program. We had a young woman from one of the service clubs at the high school who came to help. We had reached out to them to see if they wanted to help. And it was just, the kids obviously have a lot of needs and attention, and they hung in there with it all. And they left with, in our case, we were looking at Georgia Qsork today, because it's all big, wonderful flowers in spring, and it's Mother's Day, and it's Teacher Appreciation Week. So they each left with at least one flower that they had made, and left behind some humongous flowers that are going to go on display to thank the teachers. And it was overall just wonderful, and just wanted to let you know that it's up and running. And there's a little question that I think that'll continue now into next school year, so that's just crazy wonderful. The other thing, Bennington Cares is going to be providing breakfast for the teachers and the staff at Bennington Elementary on Friday morning, so we will set up something in their teacher lounge. And again, they're just really grateful, what the principal is, the teachers don't know yet. That's going on.
Maybe now?
Yeah, starting at seven o'clock, come get your breakfast if you're there. The other thing that I guess as citizens we can do is, I hope, and you'll let us know if it's helpful, is to let you know some of what we're hearing. And some of what we're hearing is that folks are still not quite aware of what's going on in terms of the leaking ceiling thing at, not thing, the leaking ceiling at Bennington Elementary School. And yet, when you read the minutes from your meeting, it's clear that you took action pretty, almost immediately. And you have plans in place for, you know, the work to be done on that roof immediately when school ends. And I would just encourage you to find other ways maybe of communicating how you're acting and what you're doing. We can't depend on everybody to read, you know, the minutes of the board meetings. We can help spread the word about that because it was just such good news. But anyways, that, again, that we can help, but there are other ways to get more direct communication into the schools as well as to the community would just, I think, help us all have more confidence in what's going on, and that when things come to your attention, you really pay attention, because you certainly did in this situation. And the other thing that I would request, if that's appropriate, is at your next meeting, it would be wonderful to have an update on what's going on with the searches for the principals for the two elementary schools. Don't know really where it's at, I'm sure you're making some headway, but an update.
I'll speak out of the superintendent's report this evening.
Alright, then we'll be all ears.
Immediate action.
Jim, do you, our superintendent Calkeen, don't sing anyone in?
I see three members, potentially three members of the public here, but under our new security precautions, they are muted, so they would have to go down to reactions at the bottom of their screen and raise their hand, and then I could ask them to unmute if they wished to be heard during public comment.
We'll wait, we have a few moments for that.
At the bottom of your screen, you'll see reactions, click on that, and if you do, anyone of the gesture, raise a hand or thumbs up will know that you wish to speak.
Once, twice, three times, alright, well, thank you, everyone. So that brings us to our agenda item number three, which is the warning to the land lease. We had discussed last month, seems like a long time ago, it was just last month, that we had discussed the Head Start's base. And so, I don't know if that is...
It did get amended this afternoon because our friends at Bennington Head Start realized that we had first drafted and first sent to do was a 25-year lease, but the federal guidelines is a 30-year lease, so we changed that and re-posted it. So it got amended to be a 30-year, so I'm sure you have the right copy, that one wrote on it.
So at the packet that I'm looking at right now includes the 30-year lease language. So I'm not sure if this is a better subject for Director Gordon or Director Anderson, but if there is a, if there's someone here for something, lots who can speak to this, to the board.
The current building, they have notified, is like beyond its lifespan. It's basically going to go on the same footprint, they own the building, federal government's paying for it. It's going to be three modular sections that will come in and build new classrooms for it. And this is the lease for the land, that modular building will go on with like a 10-foot parameter around, so the land lease is bigger than the footprint of the building by 10 feet along. Those who don't know, it's, this building is like 10 feet away from Pownell Elementary School right now. So it's, if you're looking at the front of Pownell Elementary School, look to the file left, and it's a separate building there, and that's what this program's been for, forever. Yeah, forever, so this is, their hope is to have a new building in. And the reason why this got pushed quickly is they're under a federal guideline, a timeline. And as we learn through this process, you, as a board, can only enter into a three-year lease agreement, and that by law, so that's why we need to take this to the voters. They're the only ones that have the authority to let you enter into a longer lease agreement. And this is with a great partner, and it's a great asset for the school, and we don't want to lose the opportunity for our incoming students to go through there.
Great, so what is, please, anyone, any of the directors and superintendent can correct me. What we're needing now is a motion to specifically warn this using the language of the 30-year lease. So I would entertain a motion that we warn the following article to be voted upon June 13th, 2020.
Then you're all going to sign.
We're all going to sign anyway. The language is, for anyone tuned in from home, "Shall the voters authorize the Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District as owner to lease a plus or minus 5,162 square foot parcel of land located, give or take plus or minus 15 feet northerly of the northerly wall of kindergarten wing of the Pownell Elementary School Building and 94 Schoolhouse Road in Pownell, to United Counseling Services of Bennington County Incorporated so that it may construct a new building for a Head Start preschool and associated early education services, which lease has a term of 30 years with one 30-year renewal term and annual rent of $1." So I would entertain a motion to warn that, please.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jim, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have a first and a second, any further discussion on...
And just to, you know, UCS is front of the bill, it's not tax theirs, right?
Correct, yeah, this is the...
And then you rent it for $1, which you've been doing as prior contact, okay?
If you do the math, that's 30 bucks. Don't spend the one foot.
Right. And whoever's here at the end of 30 years can have it.
Alright, alright, but the minutes reflect, yes. So we're going to see if we'll not be...
Chris, do you have to hold an informational meeting about this, similar to like what we do for our annual meeting? So that is also in here, that'll be Monday, June 12th at 5:30, which will be here in case the public wants to come and be more informed and have a discussion about it before the vote on that following day.
Thank you, Director Gordon, absolutely. So there is no Zoom option for that meeting, we're doing it. Does that also need to be warned or is simply the article itself that needs to be warned?
As long as this whole document is going to be part of the record, this is essentially being warned for that special.
So in that case, let me, Jeff, would you be willing to modify your motion to instead be to move that the article in its entirety, as it was provided in the board packet, be warned?
Oh, would it as, article entitled Board Packet be warned with a vote on 13th and the informational on 12th?
Perfect. Sandy, you still want a second on that motion?
I do, thanks.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Aye, any opposed, thank you, any extensions, motion carries, thank you very much. And we will circulate this for everyone's signature. Alright, that brings us...
Thank you, I'm sure UCF and Head Start is, would be very pleased to get the board's support of this action. So that federal timeline has got everyone here.
So agenda item four is our consent agenda, it's attached to the other agenda, includes our minutes from our last meeting in April. So just to start with, does anyone have any proposed modifications or amendments from the minutes on April 11? Okay, the rest of the consent agenda includes one retirement, one resignation, and five nominations. So I would propose to accept the motion to, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as published, please. Make the motion. Do I have a second, please?
Have a second.
Alright, we have a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye, any opposed, any extensions, and the consent agenda passes. And just so folks know, those contracts are ready to be signed by the employees. So that brings us to policies, agenda item five, there are two that we need to adopt. So we had warned both of these back in the December meeting, so some of our current board members were not present for that. But it's a policy on non-discrimination, that's policy number 2200, and it's more or less an updated policy on behavioral interventions, which is policy 5405. So the language, each of those policies, as they were warned back in December, were included in this month's board packet. So I would entertain a motion to accept both of the, to formally adopt both of those policies, please. Make the motion formally adopt, please. Thank you, Jeff, is there a second to adopt policies 2200 and 5405?
Second.
Thank you. So we have a first and a second, any discussion about these policies?
Yes, one thing, 5405 is section six, the documentation review shares that the Special Education Director will review the incident reports, and I didn't believe we still had that position, but I could be wrong.
Could you please just tell me again, Sandy, where you're reading?
Section six, on the behavioral.
Yep, okay, thanks.
Under the documentation review, it shares that the escalation instructor and Special Education Director will review these incidences, and I wasn't...
The directors do support services.
So I was asking if we could change something to reflect the position? And both that and that.
I don't know what wording was used off the meeting, but that's...
Yeah, but back in, well, I mean, back in December when we warned this, it would have been that. It would have used the title Special Education Director, which none of us caught at the time, so thanks for that, Sandy. So...
It's in two spots.
It's under documentation review and...
Below that, of administrators.
So Jim, superintendent Calkeen, let me ask your opinion. You know, there's a certain level of formality I like to observe with the meetings. This is not substantive change, this is, to my eye, this is just a change in nomenclature and doesn't change the intent or the effects of this policy, if you can make that. We can do it just in-house, or do we need to circle back through the SBSU Policy Committee?
It would, it'll go back to the Policy Committee change, so, yeah. So in that, I mean, basically notify them, so it's not going to take, not going to, anyone who's already voted on it, it's not going to have to be voted on, it's just corrected to the job title change.
So in that case, Sandy, are you making a motion that we, are you requesting a modification of the motion on the floor to correct the position title in policy 5504?
I absolutely am.
Okay.
A second, though.
Thank you, so we have, so Jeff and Glenn is the folks who made the first and the second of that initial motion. Are you comfortable with that modification?
Yes.
Okay, then we have the first and second on the modified language. So any discussion on moving forward with the modified language? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving these two policies with the change in language as described, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, that motion carries. And superintendent Calkeen, would you, would simply notifying the chair of the Policy Committee suffice? So I'll take that, since I said on the Policy Committee, I will let the chair now.
I'll speak with the administrative assistant to the Policy Committee, which I'll ask you tomorrow, is if it's going out to any of the boards, I don't know where we are in the cycle of work, but we'll make that correction.
Okay, great, thank you. It looks like it's only been to, it's been over Benton and Arlington at this point, so.
So before it goes to MA next week.
Great, thank you. Alright, so that brings us to the next agenda item, which is finances, number six. So Director Gordon, you can go on the floor.
I don't really have anything for you tonight. I'm not even sure if the treasures report actually came in and was posted or not.
No, it's not supposed to be posted, yeah, it's not.
Alright, well, thanks. Superintendent Calkeen?
Superintendent Calkeen is going to lead off with Director Holly Anderson to give you, because this was a question at a previous board meeting, where are we on our Esser construction projects? We should be good to, does everyone know, Director Anderson, she started this July 1st, so you're not everyone...
Is it okay if I can sit at the table?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to...
Want to sit here, or is that too close to me?
Oh, no, that's way away from you.
If you go next to the chair.
I don't want to run right back to anybody, so here.
So I did ask Holly to come tonight, she's going to be doing a round at all the mainboards, all the boards, because there's so many projects that are about to start to take off, and some big ones, particularly for the Union Elementary District.
Yeah, so, so let me share my screen. Slideshow, so I just have a couple of quick slides to go through, and you can see my, so, again, I'm Holly Anderson, I'm relatively new to the SBSU, I've been here for nine months, but I'm having more fun than legally allowed, so thank you very much for having me. I'm giving an update on the R Esser, not the other Esser ones, but just the ones dealing with indoor air quality and COVID response. And just as we're looking at the projects, we're looking at energy efficiency, accessibility, looking at comfort of the spaces for the occupants, and always looking toward future proofing and master planning with our buildings, and not doing one-off projects, but thinking holistically about what we're doing. So in 2017, three of our elementary schools underwent energy efficiency projects. So they got a rooftop unit, and then they got ductwork put through the school and lighting upgrades. And when I began working here, the idea was to take out all the infrastructure and replace it all with stuff, with equipment that was sized correctly for a fully air-conditioned system, which after review with the design team, we thought wasn't necessary for a couple of different reasons. One is that it's new equipment, it hasn't lived its full life. The others, that during the summer, generally not specifically, the elementary schools are occupied heavily, and if they are, it's in the morning, so we don't really need a fully air-conditioned system. What we do need is to adhere to the guidelines of the Agency of Education, and they require a few things. One, the ashtray standards, which are the amount of air that's circulated through the building, temperature ranges, which range, so the Agency of Ed wants us to be between 68 and 78. And they also want us to dehumidify the air, and so it's like a drier air. So that's what we're doing at Monument and Molly Stark, is sort of looking at rooftop units to add cooling coils so we can temper the air to those temperature ranges and dehumidify. As part of that, we have to insulate the ductwork, and how the ductwork is installed in all three of those buildings is slightly different. So we're working on that now, and how we're going to reconfigure the ceilings, how to work this stuff. Shafter and Pownell have a little more work to do, they still have equipment on the roof that has outlived its useful life, so we're replacing those. Woodford Hollow has heating and air conditioning, but they don't have ventilation, so that, the design for that is fully complete, that's out to bed, and we're hoping to do that this summer. And the other piece of the passing problems are, we're just selling an elevator at Bennington Elementary, and I have some pictures for you on that. Jeff, Chris, any questions so far?
I do, I'm wondering, do you have any roof issues that you have to address when you are replacing any of your units?
Yeah, so, so we're going to be replacing the roof at Pownell, that's all that counts, all the machinery is taken care of, so that's done at Pownell. Monument has a new room, Molly Stark, we're sad, Pownell and Shafter, it's one of those of her telling not knowing, because we have old rooftop units, so we have to take them out to see if there's any structural issues around the roof. We are not anticipating any roofing repair at this time, but we'll know when we start putting it apart. And Woodford, no, we're not touching. Does that answer your question?
Timeline for something.
Timeline, so I have a couple, I'm going there, I'm going there. So this is, most of the work we're doing is really exciting and wonderful, and it's in rooftop units and in the ductwork, which I can talk about obsessively because I love mechanical systems. But this is, this is something that we're doing that the, for Bennington Elementary, the exterior of the elevator is the exact proportions of the golden ratio, and so I bought a book to learn about the golden ratio, because the architect was going on about the nature and Fibonacci, and I was like, I don't know. But basically, the architect looked at it and said, hey, we can, we have to place masonry anyway, we have to have masons place brick anyway, why don't we take this opportunity to create a learning opportunity? So that is in the bid documents that are out on the street right now. You can see on the left, there's our sundial, and the Fibonacci sequence, golden ratio. We do have that in the bid package as part of the project, and then we have a deduct all for the contractor to just straight labor and not do anything fancy.
That would be on the side of the building, right?
Right, okay, yeah. So timelines, I'm learning how fun federal and state procurement is. It is, it is a ball, I'm having a blast. All the different projects throughout the SBSU are on slightly different timelines, and construction, like everything else, has been greatly affected by COVID. So there's a lot of federal money coming down through the pipe, and contractors are very, very busy. And so we've sent out a number of requests for proposals or requests for pre-qualifications, and have gotten very little to our response, so we're navigating those waters as we speak. We are hopeful, however, that we can get the ventilation in at Woodford, we can get the elevator if we started, and they have all the messy, loud work done before school starts in the fall. And I'll know more about Molly Stark after the videos do, I think, probably five o'clock. The other pieces, the other schools, most likely, because of material lead times and labor and the status of the design, will be next summer.
Just one comment, I know in Shasper, we did a, you know, we planned on this eventually adding, so I don't know if you went back to the original, I don't know who the original contractor was, but, you know, I think they were planning to come back at some point to do the, you know, ventilation system and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, so I know that the original contractor has gone back and provided the design team with what they've done to date.
Yep.
And the design team is looking at that, saying, okay, how can we meet that requirements as part of that, so, yeah.
I have a question, yeah, out of curiosity, is there any way to, I know that this is a big project, but maybe involve some of the tech, was it the Southwest Tech students?
Oh, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, is that a possibility?
It is always a possibility, what I would caution is, is that they, they, I ask this all the time, so I'm like, they really connect to a lot of, a lot of things, and I didn't absolutely connect with that.
They also do not have these trade categories for this, you know, they have HVAC on the plumbing, they don't have masonry, so it would be difficult. And they're also, not only, one thing that Holly is learning is, when it's federal money involved, we have to pay, we have to ensure that the contractors are paying wages under the Davis-Pacon Act, which is basically, you know, which is, if you're in an area where it's unionized employees, it's pretty much the same thing. But here, Bennington County, a lot of these services are not by unionized companies, so there's an added burden for Holly on this, to make sure that all contract, and then, you know, they have to report out, be ready to report out to the federal government about that they are paying, they have to produce their payroll documents, so that would complicate using student help.
Yeah, I don't believe that is, but what is a possibility is, in my previous construction lines, we've had Southwest Tech students come and watch country things. in my previous previous construction lines, we've had Southwest Tech students come and watch concrete things, go and watch the excavation process and and watch the different pieces of parts and ask questions, so there's always an educational, maybe not, not hands-on, but but certainly field trips and asking questions. So that's basically it, I I just wanted to give you an update, we're trying to get that money spent by fall of two thousand twenty-four. And we have projects going on in all the other districts in the SBSU, so we're we're rocking and rolling as best we can.
Arlington and MAU buildings also having similar projects going.
Do you have the same contractor for all of those schools?
That's a great question, so we, when we went out to ask for prequalifications and renovations to bid the work, we got crickets because we bundled them all together, so we had to put them out on the streets as individual projects. And we have one contractor, the only contractor we have right now under contract, ready to go, is Russell Construction in Redland, Vermont. My sense moving forward is when we get bids for the other projects, they will all likely be different contractors.
Question, are there any like community contractors that would be willing to maybe help out or be on the contract? Tell me about community contractors. I don't really know community contractors, so I'm thinking of like, you know, how Shire's Housing will have their set of contractors or whatnot and then some of the other developments will too, so I'm just curious if that's something that you could do too.
Yeah, we don't, I'm happy to look into it and get that to you. We don't have any self-performing contractors that are employees of the SBSU, so that, we we don't have that, but if you have contacts, I'd be happy to look into that.
We've all put bids in the past for, you know, drip and drag projects, you know what I mean, I don't hate to put in contracts.
Yeah, we use local contractors, local contractors often end up being the subcontractors that are then hired by who wins the bid, so it's it's a little bit too early to tell, you know, who's some of these, we would hope that would be local contractors, but there's so many school districts, because there's so much federal money out there, that all needs to be spent by the same time.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're competing.
Yeah, we're competing with the hospitals, we're doing a future innovation as well.
Yes.
It would be a good time to be an H V A C technician or company.
Yeah.
Do you think that by the fall, you'll have that full list of us for each of the schools?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I know the farthest along right now is Arlington, but we're under contract, we're waiting to hear from the state to get the final blessing to be able to start construction. So Arlington's sort of a good trajectory, they'll be off starting in the summer, I'll be able to inform you as to where we are in the fall about the New Elementary and then if you're an assu in the middle school, we're, yeah, okay, fine.
Like, actually, absolutely, no.
We're putting in play, girls.
No, I I really would love to hear about our elementary schools.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to hear that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No problem.
Another thing that Holly is repeatedly hearing from me is the multi-year planning program that she's also working on and signs this, so. And we've attempted this multiple times, but particularly with MAU, what I'm looking for is, you know, a review of all our buildings. The state is doing it, but not to the extent that, you know, the inventory that we want and really for like budget planning purposes, that what's what's a one-year prospect, you know, someone asked about what the condition of the roofs are. That should be on this inventory list, every building, what's the length, once the projected, replace them so that, you know, we're in fiscal year twenty-eight, then we know that it's the roof of Molly Stark that is gonna be on the boiler, you know, Bennington Elementary needs to be replaced, so those are the, those are the the things that I'm, I want Holly to put into a multi-year plan and when I I simplify to say a one-year, five-year, ten-year plan, it may come back to look like something different, she's the expert in it, not me. But and there's always gonna be projects that that get bumped and down on a list like that because, you know, all of a sudden the roof is leaking, right? But we're 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 good at putting out fires, but I wanna be better at long-range, short, short-term and long-range planning. And that's, you know, one of the big benefits that not having this position in the past and asking our Director of Finance and Operations to do it on top of all our budget planning was, you know, was not the best use of, even though she has, her heart is in architecture and she's worked for architectures and she she likes that as much as she likes numbers, but yeah, so I'm I'm looking forward to, and that, once that, but that plan won't be a secret, once that is developed, that will, you know, be shared with everyone, particularly as we get into budget season. So that everyone knows what big ticket item might be coming.
I I think that you shortcut a little bit your qualifications on how good that you are in being able to look and see things that, from that perspective, I'm sure that's not the perspective you have when you walk into an educational setting, however.
I, yeah, given my background.
Yes, given your background.
When I walk in, I I tell people, I worry about what's under the floor and the walls and above the ceiling.
Yeah.
For those who don't know, I I I taught at a vocational high school, cafeteria, can make a license general contract, say Massachusetts, for my years, and commercial and residential problems, so, yeah, it is. You know, Holly and I might have had a few conversations going construction rooms, but and, you know, who might have the better hot hat collection, I don't know, but.
Mine's all pink, so, yeah, there you go.
And mine, mine heavily favored the Boston Red Sox, so. So, yes, Sandy, to to your point, it's these buildings are precious resources because, you know, there is no state mechanism to build a new school. And there's no state assistance to build a building, so, and, you know, we debated not having an elevator at Molly Stark is something that's, that, I mean, excuse me, at Bennington Elementary School is something that has bothered me since I started here because how many times did I shift a classroom because there was someone who needs, you know, we don't have access to the second floor.
I student taught there and I agree, that's two years back.
But then you look at, do you really put an elevator in a building that was built in the nineteen fifty's? And reality is, I don't think, you know, we're talking about a thirty-year lease with the, with UCF, I don't, I don't see us getting a new building anytime soon. So we have, you know, we have the opportunity to spend the federal monies to do that, but, and it's the same discussion I've had with Holly about, like, MAU, the high school. I think it 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 boggles the mind when you really think what the age of that building is and what we still expect it to do. And, you know, everything from sewer lines to collapsed pipes to, you know, it's, the roofs are the obvious thing, but it's like, you know, is is the electrical load of these buildings, you know, capable of handling the way we use it in school? So never mind the lack of space and because the way a school is designed and how many services we have in schools that didn't exist, those buildings were built and we need room for them, so. And on the elementary level, one thing that Holly's probably heard me half about is, you gotta do something about the cafeteria at at Molly Stark.
Cafeteria.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, cafeterias, cafeteria.
It's, you know, it has no, it has no use. We can't give it exterior light because it's, when they put that addition on, I don't know how many years ago, they made it an inside building, but it's very I want our elementary schools bright vibrant places that look like they are primary schools, you know, and that and not necessarily like, you know, they could be a substitute for, you know, Hollywood calls, hey, we need to shoot the, shoot a picture of a cafeteria in, you know, the county jail, oh, we, you know, that's, it's drab, it's dark. She's got some plans about ceiling work, once all this ductwork gets changed and what to make, to give more height in there and brighter colors, so I'm, yeah, hopeful of it.
So if I understand you correctly.
Yes.
You believe that we could in the future maybe see some brighter, happier colors in some of the schools?
Yes, we already are, um, sorry, don't, but we replaced the carpet in all the cabin areas of Monument with a really cool product that's called Forvo and their carpet squares, that's self-healing, so if someone walks over it with.
The superintendent might have upheld the carpet order until we knew that it met our brighter standard.
And it's, it's, it's not quite the color green of your water nature thing, but it's, but it's all in squares, so if something does happen, you can just replace that section. It's solid denim and it's made out of recycled materials, so it's, it's gonna be there until we decide to.
Holly's all about dragging us into green too, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, I like talking about light bulbs, but, um.
I think I was banning you from talking about light bulbs.
But I also just, just so, you know, especially during COVID, the gym cafetorium stages became not dumping grounds, but like warehouses of stuff, you know, like people needed to know what to do with it, yeah, and, um.
I may need that piece of cardboard someday.
Yeah, ding ding ding, so we, we started in Molly Stark and we went through, it says clean, though. Yeah, it's clean, it's painted, it's usable, is it perfect? Absolutely not, but man, it's usable.
New colors?
Uh, new colors, it is painted right now white, just to make it clean and like we patched the whole.
Then you perform the same power.
Yeah, we did the same power, we filled the thirty-yard dumpster with the stuff. And one of the benefits of having a good relationship with the fire marshal is that I've been able to walk through the buildings within and have them say, yeah, no, you've gotta get rid of some of the stuff because there's only a certain percentage of combustibles that you can have in the building. Our next stop is Monument and then we'll just keep going and and calling as much as we can. So, yes, brighter colors everywhere.
I mean, particularly as we replace flooring, that's the initiative that I I wanna say that more, you know, it's not, it shouldn't look like office space, it should look like an elementary school classroom.
Yeah, we got.
You have, you have bright colors up the wall.
I did, I love bright colors.
Yeah, our walls were, when you had that painted, the walls were pretty bright out there, yeah.
Yeah, our new cafeteria tables are bright blue in Powell and Molly Stark, so we're we're starting to, we're starting to get a handle on some of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the enthusiasm.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, and we're just starting.
Who's the architect on that, on the site that they incorporated all the Fibonacci sequence stuff into the elevator?
Jeff Goldstone, Goldstone, good architecture, so, yeah.
Hopefully we won't have to exercise that, that was another discussion Holly and I, so we gotta, hopefully we can afford that and that, you know, you know, it's not gonna make the building of the elevator shaft unable to be done, but but nobody wants to see just a plain, a center block wall either.
Well, and it's just a great opportunity to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Always adding math.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And new addition.
Any other questions for Director Anthony Anderson? Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The other theme of the superintendent is the principal searches, as you know, that we are looking for two principals, one from Molly Stark Elementary School, one for Bennington Elementary School. We have two screening committees in place, I hope that the Director of HR is going to send out invitations for next week to start those. So how we have done this in the past, the screening committees then make recommendation to the superintendent, then I invite that candidate into a large interview process with all directors and some other principals for a more specific, more on educational content. My caution to all of you is, the pool isn't very deep, there's not many candidates. So we will go through this process, the screening committee can decide whether they, you know, want to move forward with who's in the pool or whether we need to develop another tactic. And it's not, it's not unique to us here, I hear this from my superintendent colleagues throughout the state. Everyone's always actually got a good principal, got somebody, you know, or someone who's in the pipeline, might be coming up, so. It's a difficult, difficult job, it goes, you know, without the protection of what a teacher is in the union, so I don't know if that contributes, that people don't want to leave the the security of that to become an administrator. I I I think being a principal is far more difficult than my job and I would, if I was in that career, I would think long and hard before I I wanted to be a principal because there's so many, so many things that can slip you up and one mistake, you know, make your job difficult. But I think that that goes to what we're seeing throughout the country right now, that, you know, it's not just in education that labor pools are small and and discord is high and so if you don't have thick skin and can be willing to take criticism, it's it's a, you might not, you might not buy. And so I just want the board aware that the pool is slim, but Nick Hall will be reaching out to set up the first round interviews for next week. And, yeah, we gotta herd a group of people to get together, so, you know, I'm optimistic that we'll be able to find everyone to get together a day next week. And it, like I said, because the pool is so thin, it's not gonna be a long process. And that's, that's it for me.
Any questions for our superintendent?
On typically May, I thought, was our stated schools address, are you moving that to June?
A what?
State of the schools, where you share how we're doing.
Oh, you mean, you mean as far as standardized test scores and that type of state of the school?
Overall, um, based on the goals.
I've really heard you doing that, but, you know, state of the school?
I thought it was every night.
I mean, I think it kind of, I mean, it was there, I think, when maybe Donna left. I can't remember when, there's, there's trends, it's worth kind of dropping, it was more public than when I left.
Oh.
But I do remember being at one point, that when I'd been here before.
I, it doesn't really matter my experience.
Really?
It used to be like that report card thing.
And it was, yeah.
Yeah, it showed like how kids are doing, like every level, yeah, I mean, I think the last time we had one of the website was back in two thousand thirteen.
But I thought it was required.
I'm not aware of.
Yeah, like I said, I think a phase like Donna was.
Yeah, might have been something that she did, you know, as as the assistant superintendent. Happy to give you any report that you would like, but, you know, I don't, I did not do like a report or a state of the school report. I guess, unless, you know, my memory is even worse than I think it is, but, which is possible.
Question, is there a way to maybe, how do we restart doing that again, just because I know.
Yeah. Well, I don't even know what it is, so that's, you know, that, and I have to go back and research what, you know, you're asking for.
So I think generally speaking, this board can make any request it wants to about the superintendent and and either.
That's why I said, like, if there's a report you want, we'll be happy to put it together.
But I'm sure the panel will deliver it, or as we saw tonight, one of the directors will will step up.
The point, this, this month, we did the S R funding, what I'm hoping to have ready for you for next month is pointing where as far as we'll be at the end of the school year, we'll have enough of a snapshot that we can look at behavior data, which was requested at the craziest meeting, yeah, so that that should be at your June meeting.
Any, any other questions for our superintendent? All right, we don't have a principal report tonight.
Yeah, I I could tell you a great story about, you know, how none of the principals were available, or I could be honest with you and admit that the superintendent forgot to invite a principal, so.
I think we've accomplished a lot this night between our special meeting and tonight's meeting and we're not even done yet, so.
So I I apologize for that and your principal, I'm sure they would have been, well, they come and fight, remember, that's right. But I have two meetings to plan for tonight and I got two tomorrow night and it slipped my mind to invite a principal, so I apologize for that.
So that brings us to the chair's report, so given the sign and the fact we have executive session, maybe very brief, just two quick items. One, sort of, we've already discussed, if there's ever an agenda item that any of the members of this board want to discuss, typically the, well, the agendas have to be warned by the Friday before the weekend meeting. And it's always been my practice as board chair, if a board member wants something to be discussed, it will be discussed, so just let me know, we can add it to the to the.
We try to get them by Thursday, just in case, like, somebody's out on Friday, something gets sick, he doesn't, and and anybody who wants a physical pack, pack it gives us an extra day to mail it, so.
Very certainly, there's, there's some person, as well-intentioned as he may be, there's one person who tends to let up and so it typically doesn't get warned until Friday. He means well, it's just he doesn't always do it, I'm sure, I don't know who that is, but. So, and the other thing, of course, is just to, once again, recognize me, superintendent, okay, that's not him, that's me.
I don't think he was referring to me. Wait, thanks.
Uh, just again, to to recognize each other's appreciation, we can all have that in a little ways. Truly mariner things that our teachers do and it's very amazing stuff for our students.
Thank you for.
Can you?
That's brilliant. So that brings us to our final agenda item shy of actually closing the meeting, so that's executive session. So I would entertain a motion, move into executive session pursuant to my screen shut down. That's one VS, I'm seeing if I can do my password ad quote statute, but I can't. So it's a. Yes, thank you.
A two.
Which allows us to discuss employees, employment and evaluation of employees. So invited to superintendent. You're absolutely invited, superintendent, so that, so could I have that motion, please?
You'd like to motion?
Excuse me, could I have a second for that? Thanks, Jeff. Any discussion about moving into executive session? Hearing none. All those in favor of moving into executive session, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The abstentions, the motion carries, I think we're all set. Okay, I don't know if Richard's still with us, but he's not, so. So I would entertain a motion to exit executive session, please.
I would like to make a motion to exit executive session.
I second that.
Thank you. First and second, any discussion about exiting? Hearing none. All those in favor of exiting executive session, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, we are out of executive session. Now entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I'd like to motion.
Excuse me, I'll second. Last and second, any discussion about adjournment? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions, we are adjourned, I think we're all set.